It's just common sense is taking a side street and I don't know what to do to get it back on track.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brandon Lewis, founder of the Tennessee Conservative and I'm joined by Rhonda Thurman. Rhonda serves as District One Representative of the Hamilton County School Board. She was born in October of 1956 to Thelma Potter and Wesley Mutt Skiles, where they lived on Bean Street in Saudi Daisy, Tennessee. Later, Rhonda moved to Red Bank where she attended Red Bank High School and played basketball and volleyball until graduating in 1974. She's been married to Don Thurman for the last 44 years, has one daughter and two grandchildren. And she has lived in Fallingwater for 27 years. She's a self-employed business owner and has been a hairdresser for 45 years. She's a member of Red Bank Presbyterian Church and has served as a Sunday School teacher and Chairman of the Christian Education Committee where she has attended for the last 55 years. She was named PTA Volunteer of the Year at Wallace A. Smith Elementary School. She has served as Treasurer of the Paco Dern Club and received the Tough Tusk Award, which is deserved, and the Thomas Garrity Award for the Republican Party. She was inducted into the Red Bank High School Hall of Fame in 2017. She first was elected to District One School Board as a representative in 2004. And Rhonda has fought for her district and I'll give her some time to talk about that in a moment. But she has also fought for a lot of transparency and excellence she does, but the kids, the taxpayers first. And Rhonda does something that is not very popular with politicians. And she just tells the truth instead of throwing a bunch of word salad at people that is meaningless, which is what most Republican and conservative politicians do. So I've always admired you because you speak plainly and very few people do. Rhonda, welcome to the program.
Thank you, Brandon. Yeah, I always heard that plain talk was easily understood. So I try to just talk plain.
Yes, you should talk plain. I like it. The older I get, the more I like people to get to the point. So you're a wife, a mother, a grandmother, a small business owner, a school board member. Do you have any free time? What do you spend your time doing before we get into the meat potatoes of what's going on with Tennessee's educational system right now? And Hamilton County too. But what do you do for fun?
My fun time, Brandon, it sounds crazy. A lot of people would never dream this, but I love to do yard work. I like to tear things up, dig things up. Just I like to be able to look back at the end of the day and look and see that I've accomplished something. I'd like to do it for my mother. I do it for myself. I do it for relatives, my sister. A lot of people, I like to go plant things, landscape in front of their yard, whatever. And I sew. I've made all the drapes in my house. I make these things there behind us. I do all kinds of sewing. I've made comforters and I've been sewing ever since I was in high school. So that's one of the things I do just to kind of sit back and relax sometimes. I just like to accomplish something and look back and see that something has changed because of my work.
Well, I can, I can, I like something similar. I like to go camping, which is a long series of chores interrupted by brief periods of rest. And everything takes three times longer to do. And so I like to do things. That's I relieve my mind by doing stuff because I'm a mover and you probably are too. So if you sit still, that's not relaxing.
No, I can't relax because I just sit there and think of all the things I could be doing. You know, like you've sat here for an hour, you could have, you know, go out and rake some leaves or you could have done something and it might have made a difference. But my husband always says, you need to relax. I just, this is, he does not understand that my working is relaxation.
Well, that's my, I think my wife would share that sentiment. She can sit, read a book on the beach, just sit there and I'm like, I gotta walk the beach. I gotta throw some horseshoes. I gotta run the beach. And I gotta run the stuff up and down from the beach to the kids. I mean, just give me an errand to run. So pardon me asking so bluntly, but what in the world ever made you want to run for school board? You know, I have a hard time understanding and I've got friends that are in the US Congress and people that ran for Senate and other things. I have a hard time understanding why people do that. I have a hard time understanding why somebody would run for mayor. I'm glad that we got some good people that do. We got probably a lot more people that could, probably couldn't run a, couldn't run a Dairy Queen as a shift manager in Poughkeepsie. But nonetheless, you decided to run for school board and that's like the most thankless position ever made for elected office and hardest to probably please people. So what, what made you want to do that?
Okay, well, like you said, I've been a hairdresser 45 years and when I have a customer in my chair, it's one-on-one. And I get to find out a lot about people, how they, what they were thinking. And it seemed like there was a common denominator with all of them. They always wondered, every year they want more money for schools. What in the world are they doing with all this money? Why does it go up every year? Why do the kids scoring less than, you know, their scores are going down and down and yet we're spending more and more? So I started asking myself that question and started a group called Citizens Advancing Responsible Education. Started it back, oh my goodness, I don't know how many years ago it has been. But we started that and we started looking at the school budget and found a lot of places where we were spending a lot of money. Made a lot of changes though because we exposed it. We would go speak at school board meetings. We would do all those kinds of things. So from that, and then too, if you recall, right after that, we had the big will tax push to, to get a will taxed for the school. Well, I was adamantly opposed to that because I realized that the school would spend every dime that you give them and beg for more. And so, and then too, that would be a hard, that's just a hardship on working people when you start taxing their vehicles. And it's already money they don't have. But anyway, we started CARE is the one who got the referendum, got it put on the, got it sent to a referendum and got it put on the ballot and was voted down. So after that, you know, people got to know a little bit about who I was. And people started asking me about running for school board. So I decided to do it. And it was a really hard race. I was running against a school teacher and, and people just thought there was no way I would, could win and I won. And so anyway, that's, that's how I got started. But you say it's a thankless job and it seems like it is to a lot of people. But I tell you, I get a lot of satisfaction in just the last few weeks. I've had people call and thank me for doing things for their students. You get a chance to meet a lot of people and you see how a lot of people are really hurting. It's an opportunity for me to tell people where they can go get help, to intervene with the superintendent on some, some things that do not make sense. I like to see students from, you know, I got a thing the other day from a Boy Scout who had just made his Eagle Scout badge and what he had done up in Saudi Daisy. You know, he went around and tested all the fire hydrants and painted them all. And you know, there's a lot of things like that that I get to hear that if I wasn't on the school board, I would never know. To give you hope for the future about some of these, these kids, because there are a lot of really good kids. We hear about the bad ones, but there are a lot of really good ones. But I feel like it's a fight for the little man, like we got rid of school fees is one thing. And I started that fight even before I got on the school board. It was actually my sister that went to the state legislature about school fees because I'd always said they were illegal because we're supposed to have a free education in the state of Tennessee. But it was, it was my nieces getting embarrassed at school, getting a hot pink piece of paper saying, you owe a math fee or you owe a science fee and embarrassing them in front of their peers. When they were in school, that caused my sister to go off the deep end. I mean, she was already a single mom having a hard enough time. You don't have to go to school and be embarrassed in front of your peers. That should never, never happen. And so due to that, indeed, we were told to cease and desist. You know, forcing kids to pay fees. Well, we finally got it changed here in Hamilton County now to comp. And then the teachers would still make the students feel guilty because your parents were being cheap skates or whatever. Or you were making everybody else in the class pay for things that your parents ought to have to share and pay them as well. So anyway, it's school, at school board of two years ago, we decided to start putting money in the budget to cover things that fees had covered in the past to stop it. And I'm, right now we're fighting fees to play sports. You said that I paid, I played basketball and volleyball. I did do that in high school, but I also played softball. You know, I used to play golf, used to do all kinds of, all kinds of things. If my parents had had to pay for me to do that, I wouldn't have gotten to do it. There were four kids in my family. We all played all kinds of sports and we wouldn't have gotten to do that. And that's what gets a lot of people out of school. That's what gets a lot of these kids in school, keeps them in school, makes them make good grades so they can play sports. But even when you're charging $500 and $600 for kids to play football, and this is insanity. It's total insanity. So now you're getting to where only the elite get to play. Well, what about these poor little kids if that may be their only ticket to college? Maybe they're really good athletes, but their parents can't get out and raise that kind of money. So you know, I get, I get satisfaction out of doing those kinds of things. You know, you get to meet some, some really, really good and decent people that all they want is their kids to get an education and they feel like they're being cheated. But I can kind of direct them in the right way. Maybe, maybe their child has been put out of school for something that maybe they didn't hear all the facts. And after I hear the facts, I go to the superintendent and to other school board members and say, hey, listen, this is really what happened. We need to revisit this. And I've done this for teachers. The teachers union gives me a hard time, but you will find no one who has gone before the school board and defended teachers who have been in trouble any more than I have. Now, if they deserve to be in trouble, that doesn't bother me. But there have been instances where we have really come down hard on teachers without all the facts. It's much like what has just happened to President Trump. You know, they just all pile on and they don't want to look bad and say, well, we're defending this person. A lot of people are going to think if we have this person in the classroom, well, it's our job then to get the facts out. I'm not going to go along with that because we're destroying people's lives.
Well, it's just like they put that principal in Memphis on administrative leave because he said, he basically talked to his students and said, all this censorship that's going on, you really need, you need to be self-aware as a student when people are, are trying to keep you from seeing and hearing certain points of view. And it needs to make you very skeptical. It needs to make you very worried. They put them on administrative leave for making, I mean, I thought we were supposed to challenge our children to think critically, to solve problems, to have a viewpoint that is informed. And that's essentially what he told them, which used to be the basic of, you know, Socratic teaching and a lot of other things. Great academic traditions, but we're throwing that all, you know, away for political correctness and a lot of other stuff. So I completely get it. Well, let me, you wanted to get to this, so I'm going to get to it at the beginning and reorder this puppy. About getting the kids back in school. And this is a big issue. Governor Lee, you know, recently called this emergency session, which just to me is laughable. To have the Tennessee Legislature come together and address educational problems. They're not in school. No wonder. The kids are falling behind. I mean, do you, do you need to call together three or 400 people to figure out that the kids are really struggling now because you took them out of school? And for example, my father could not read or write and had never been to school. And if I were going through this, growing up in that environment, what could he have done to help me? I mean, it would have been me, a laptop and a prayer. And I would say there's probably 30% to 25% of these kids where it really is. If the, if the child is not self-directed and self-driven, and luckily I was. My father was very encouraging about going to school, but he didn't know what happened there. And he didn't know other than, than, than that I needed to get on the bus. And if there was somewhere that I needed to be driven, and I told him that that's about all he could do. That's all he knew to do. And so what in the world, what, when did it, when did we start reducing the educational excellence, if there ever was any in public school for these kids? So that parents or teachers could feel better about themselves or that they can reduce the risk for themselves. That we always hear it's about the kids. It's about the kids. I don't think it is.
That's a lie. That's a total lie. They say kids first. Well, I'm telling you right now, this is not kids first. If it was kids first, these kids would be in school. I have told the superintendent about this. I've said it at every school board meeting. We are driven by fear, Brandon. Everybody's afraid of being sued. We're afraid that someone's going to get sick. We're not, we don't do this during flu season. Now, trust me, I've, I've lost four friends. Matter of fact, I'm going to a funeral for one of them this afternoon that died with COVID. So I know it's real. I know it's out there, but we cannot continue down this path. But they say, look at the science, look at the science, where you have students who are not in school, which is by all counts and by every scientific study, the safest place for a child to be is in school. We know this. This is not hyperbole. This is the safest place for them to be is in school. So we tell them to stay at home where most people get sick. You know, we tell them the best place for them to be is outside in the fresh air where the wind's blowing and the germs dissipate. What we do, we close the playgrounds. Everything we have done during this pandemic has been ridiculously stupid. Closing small businesses like right here, we, I was shut down for almost nine weeks. I went to my state legislatures and I tell you what, Brandon, if there's ever been anything that's made me so furious, where are our state legislators? The governors do not make laws. Legislatures make laws. And we have stood by and let these governors, governors can do emergency edicts, I will call them. But that is, it only has to be for a very short time. There needs to be a moratorium on how long this can last. Some states have a moratorium of like 30 days and the legislator has to meet it within 30 days or 60 days to either make it a law or get rid of it. Now, this is what, what we really need to be pushing here. This governor cannot, not just our governor, but any governor cannot continue to make these laws. They are not kings. We elect our state representatives. And I want to know where in the world our state representatives are, not just for this, but getting these kids back in school. Because I've got next door, right below us down there in Georgia, we're, I think maybe they kind of lost their minds down there. But at least their kids are in school. Now, I have been told for years and years about how our teachers threaten to go to Georgia all the time. Well, I took the liberty last week to call some of my teacher friends and some of my principal friends in Georgia. Are you in school? Yes, ma'am, we're wide open. Well, let me tell you something. All these teachers that complain, I want to go to Georgia. If you were in Georgia, you would have your rear end in your classroom, teaching your students. Now, this is driven, every school board meeting that we've had since March, we have had a teacher representative from either the teachers union or from the Hamilton County United, which is a teachers union on steroids, speak to us and tell us how we're putting their lives in danger. How we're doing all of these things, you know, wanting them to go back to school. And even when they were going to school two days a week and all three, which is absolutely asinine to me. You're, you're going to be around the students. You're going to be around all your students, either on Monday, Tuesday or Thursday, Friday. So why not get them all together? I don't get it. But anyway, if you are, they have been in front of the school board telling us all of this, time after time after time. So I had a parent contact me last week and she said, Rhonda, we have to get these kids back in school. My daughter is a single mom. That's who my heart goes out to. Single moms and single dads. Taking care of their children and they have to work. They have no money for extra childcare. They have, they do not have any more vacation days left. They don't have any mo, any means to help them out. Like I, we're helping my daughter. I am bringing my granddaughter to work with me every day, putting her here on this computer. She's five years old, but still I have to get, I'm paying somebody to kind of sit here and help her get through some of these things because she can't read. She's five. She can't read all the instructions. So somebody, even if she watches it on there, they have to sit with her and tell her. My grandson's at home with my husband, who was recuperating from having a tumor taken off of his spine, that my husband is trying to help him at home. But not everybody has that. Not everybody has that.
Even if you do have it, it's, it's not, if I had, I could not work my job here that I do and, and bring my daughter to work and her get a good education without my focus and attention being on her. And simultaneously, they, they, they always want to have it both ways. It's like, well, you have to be credentialed and you have to be a thousand things to be even, even an adequate teacher. And only, only public education people can educate a child, which I don't believe is true. And on the other hand, they're like, then they stick them at home. I'm like, well, are you not all-knowing professors that can only educate children and only you in a public school can educate them? And then simultaneously we stick them in front of a computer screen at home with non-educators? And so everything is, we want to have it both ways and the kids are the ones that end up being left in the lurch and right on those. We talk about empathy and sympathy and these teachers putting their lives at risk. And why wouldn't a teacher be up there talking about the single parents? I mean, it, it has come to the point where teachers in public schools especially are no longer servants. They are entitled government employees and we're just lucky that they come and do anything.
Yeah, well, Brandon, they're, they're, as I say, this parent that came and talked to me. And by the way, one other quick thing, essential employees. You say they keep telling us how, how essential they've been all this time. Your students can't learn. Your students can't read. If it wasn't for us, your students couldn't do anything, you know? But yet they don't want to be essential employees because if they're essential employees, if you don't come to work, you don't get paid.
Exactly.
And so they don't want to be essential employees in that sense, but they, yet they want to tell you how essential, essential. And you can't replace them with anyone. That a teacher who has been to school to get a teaching degree, which some people have told me, you know, you have a CPA that has to go to school and get a teaching, a teaching degree to be able to teach in a classroom, which is insane. But anyway, this parent that called me, she asked me what, what she could do, Rhonda, what can we do to get our kids back? And I said, listen, we have heard for months from teachers union and teacher representatives about how we're putting them at danger. It is time we hear from the parents. And she said, well, that's really out of my comfort zone. I said, well, you need to get on Facebook. You need, and I want parents, anybody listening to this, I want you to get on. She has started a Facebook page that is called Reopen H C D E Schools. You need to get on there. It's a private page. You have to get on, log in and I'm not going to do that because that's going to be their deal. But her name is Lisa Willard and she is supposed to speak at school board meeting this coming Thursday. So if parents want their feelings to be known and to give her some backing and let the, the school board know how many parents out there want to get back in school, you need to join that page and get with her and join in the fight. It's the only way things change is if for people, good people to do something. Because when we do nothing, we know what happens. But good people have to get out there. Let your voices be heard because these students are suffering. We have a lot of students that we never hear from. They never sign on the computer.
We've got, there's someone we know who shall remain nameless that's in our lives. And we ask them, are you, how's school going? And my, my wife is a supermom. She's homeschooled and then, you know, she's very involved and she's, you know, room mom. And I mean, she's just great. Well, not everybody's got that talent and not everybody is. Some people don't, they just don't put their kids first and they go second or third or fourth. And the child just said, we're not doing school. We're out. And I don't know how many kids are out there are just right now because of these teachers and because of these timid, awful bureaucrats, the kids are just out. They're just out. You turn, I mean, what, what's this, what's this computer going to make you do? Not much. It's all self-initiated effort. And that is just so, it is unforgivably evil to put those kids in that situation.
Right. And then too, another thing that happens during the day, maybe they get kids on a Zoom. And then, and then they send a thing through, I know some of our schools, the way they communicate with parents is through JoJo or through another app on their phone. And during the day they'll say, oh, sorry, this was the wrong Zoom meeting. We gave you the wrong password or something. Well, parents are at work. Most people, if they get their phone out at work, they lose their job. So they're sending all these emails during the day. How are these kids at home supposed to get an email that was sent to their parents? That says, I mean, I, you know, like my daughter said, but she, you know, we get off of work and she'd say, mom, you know, they changed the time of riding Zoom from this to this. I didn't get it. But what about parents that don't have smartphones, Brandon? There's a lot of those parents out there that don't.
Well, and then people act like they're, there's a lot of people and the ones that are the most pretentious about all this stuff are the people who have never grown up poor or worked around working class people.
Right.
And, and you know, I've, I've been, I've worked in the construction industry and, and, and ran the construction company and all that is, it is as real, it is super real.
Oh yeah. It is real to me. That's my family. All my family are construction. You know, I have one brother that we have, my brother, I have one brother who's a pilot. He's one of the professional trade. But he, my other, everybody else, carpenters, brick, brick masons, ironworkers, you know, plumbers. I understand that. That is my world. I don't understand all of these hoity-toity people that they think they're better than anybody else because I tell you what, we found out during this pandemic who was important. We found out it's your plumbers. It's your electricians. It's the construction people. It's those kind of people. That's who continued to work. And then too, here's another thing that makes me so angry is teachers talk about how we're putting their lives in danger. They don't have a problem going to Walmart and making those people work. They don't have a problem going to the grocery store and those people being considered as essential employees. So right now, the people at Walmart and the people that work at grocery stores are a whole lot more essential than teachers evidently because they don't want to go to work. Now, I think that a majority of the teachers do want to go to work. I did have one tell me, a male teacher tell me, Ms. Thurman, you get the kids in school, I'll be there. That's why I'm there. I'm there for the students. I'm not there about myself. I'm there for my students. And I see what's happening to my students and it breaks my heart. And I like, you know what? You just went up about 100 points in my, in my opinion. But we have to get these kids in school. There is, the science does not support keeping these kids out of school any longer. We, we have nowhere to hide. We have nowhere to run. We need to get the kids back in school. And this letting parents know a week ahead that you're going to have to get a babysitter next week. And for the teachers to say, we're not your babysitter, that just really takes it off.
I'll close off on this and then I want to talk about budgeting. But my wife and I, we're, I, I do all right. She stays at home. And we can hire, we have a buck, a part-time nanny. I mean, I tell you how, how un, she works in the, our nanny works in the COVID ward of the hospital. Nanny, COVID ward, hospital, leaves COVID ward, comes, keeps our kids. We're not afraid of that for our children. We've had COVID. It's awful. And I lost one of my very best friends this summer and buried him in Memphis. He's 50 years old, had Crohn's disease. So lucky, I understand that. But we have a hard time getting a babysitter. Like we, we try to go on an anniversary trip because our grandparents don't live close here and it's difficult for us. And like we're, and she's a stay-at-home mom, you know, I mean, and when we struggle, I couldn't imagine, you're a single mom. And I had, in, in closing, we had a bunch of mail stuffed here for an annual event that I do. And there are six people and they're all sitting in my front office stuffing mail. And every one of them has been made unemployed out of no fault of their own and for no reason because of all these restrictions and shutdowns. And two of them were unemployed because of the school system. Two single moms unemployed, trying to make a little extra money because they can't teach their kids and work. And those are the choices that people are making these people make and, and they're so flippant about it. All right, moving on. If you like what we're doing with our conservative reporting, please do go to tennesseconservativenews.com/support or just go to the main page, click the red support button. And when you do, you will get a handy dandy Proud Tennessee Conservative bumper sticker. I'll actually throw in two for the cost of one when you give any donation. So our, our child attends a private Christian school. It's like about $6,500 a year. What are we paying per pupil right now when you throw it all together in the state of Tennessee? I know it may be a little higher and lower in different areas of the state, but approximately, how much money are we kicking in here and where's it all going?
Well, Brandon, that's a loaded question. Here in Hamilton County, I'm going to say average between $10,000 and $11,000 a student. And I say that because there are some of our schools, what they do is they just put all the money that the school system gets into one pot and then they divide it up by the number of students. Well, you really can't do that because some schools get a whole lot more money than others. Like we have the opportunities on schools, for instance, that got, you know, millions and millions and millions of extra dollars for, for extra counselors, for more truant officers, for more SO, SRO officers, for, you know, just all different kinds of programs in these, in these schools. So some of those schools are getting, like that may take the average. It may make, some schools are getting $8,000, $9,000 a student and some are getting, you know, $12,000, $13,000 a student, maybe. So it's really hard to say, but we're, I'll say it's somewhere in the ballpark of around $10,000, $11,000 per pupil here in Hamilton County. Line share of that comes from the county. Yeah, we're 60% of the Hamilton County budget, overall budget. So we get, we get a good hunk, a hunk of change from Hamilton County taxpayer. And of course, and then the more money that we get from Hamilton County taxpayer, the worse the BEP formula is because we show we can be self-funded. And so it kind of hurts us on that end. So it's kind of a conundrum that, that you, that you get in. But here again, money's not the answer. Money is just not the answer.
Well, I was, because I look at it and I'm, I'm a businessman. I coach small business people all over the United States. I'm not a genius, but I understand the mechanics and operations. I can start something. I can get it up and going. And I look at that and I'm like, you know, you got eight, you say 10 kids in a classroom and you're getting $10,000. That's 100 grand. 100 grand. You give me like three sets of 10 parents, I can build a general still building. I can hire parents at like $70,000 and have 30,000, or a teacher at $70,000. I can have 30,000 left over for keeping the lights on and hiring a specialist to come in and do PE a couple of days a week and an art teacher. And I mean, I could, I don't even know anything about education. I might have to have somebody help me hire the people. But I could, I mean, that is a, a lot of money. And these kids are making it through 13 years and I've taught at Millard Mott Technical School. And the only time I've ever really, really taught other than adults in business, you know, people that own businesses, which is a lot of adult education, but they couldn't. But um, and they couldn't read, they couldn't write and they come out of the Hamilton County school systems. They couldn't punctuate a sentence. They couldn't write a one-page. Opening paragraph, three supporting paragraphs, concluding paragraphs and this punctuation was missing. And, and, and sentences weren't structured. And I don't expect you to be, you know, to be William Shakespeare, but I mean, these, these things need to be in an order and it needs to be coherent. Um, and, and I'm not, how, how do you hold your head up as a member of an organization? That can shuffle someone through for thirteen years and then basically turn them out on the other end unemployable. Because I mean, you, you can shove, you can go on off to retirement if, if you're employed by that organization and your life's no different. But for the parents of that child that's now eighteen, twenty years old, for that person and then their kids. I mean, that is a ripple effect of, of, I mean, it, things probably aren't going to turn out very well for that individual.
You, you're exactly correct. And people, at one time when I said we were graduate people who couldn't read. Some people thought, said that was not true. Well, it absolutely is true. I have met some. I, I've had a young man that I tried to get him to sue the school system. For educational malpractice because we have just doomed him to a life of working in restaurants or, or something like that. I mean, that is unfair. And the, the problem with this young man is he was a good, I'll say a good student in the fact that he'd sit there every day and behave. Didn't cause any trouble. But they said he slipped through the cracks. I said, this is a gaping hole. This is not a crack. I mean, how many teachers had to touch this student through thirteen years of school? How, how many teachers had to touch that student? Somebody needs to be held accountable somewhere along the way. And it should be in elementary school because this is where it starts. But another thing uh that we do is, is the curriculum we use. I have been fighting this asinine, ridiculous math that we use in our schools. And every time we're told that uh we're going back to basic math, that is a lie. Uh, my third grade grandson, the other day adding, my husband, who used to be, was an engineer for years. My grandson was adding three, two, two, three-digit numbers. They showed him three different ways to do this. Have these little loop-de-loops and have these little lines and. And all of this insanity. Show them how to add. We know, you know, we did not invent math. We discovered it. It was a gift from God because it works every time, no matter where you're doing, no matter what language, math works. We did not invent it because we did, we would screw it up because it is just there. Show them through thousands of years of doing math. We know the most simple way to do it. Show it to them. Quit confusing them. Quit frustrating them. My granddaughter in kindergarten is doing word problems. Okay, she got a math award. Okay, she gets it. But I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, first of all, she can't read. She's having, we're having to read these math problems to her. Okay, she gets it and she can do it. But why are you not honing in on the basics? Get the, the, you know, the basic ten is add and subtract and get your basic math facts down. So you're in, you've been in construction. If you build a foundation, a good foundation, you can build an outhouse on it. You can build a metal building on it or you can build a skyscraper on it if it's a good foundation. And that's what we're doing. We're trying to get these kids to build this foundation that's a little shaky and build a, a, you know, a skyscraper on it. It's not going to work. If you learn the basics, you can go anywhere. If you learn to read, you can read, you can learn anything. You can get on Google. Well, I don't get on Google anymore. Go to DuckDuckGo. So you go to DuckDuckGo. That's what I'm going to start saying. And you can read and find out how to do anything if you can read. It don't take a professor to tell you how to do some of these things. You can figure a lot of these things out yourself. And uh, that's why I get so angry. Just basic math and, and math was my favorite subject in school. I, I mean, I, I've taken a little bit of, uh, you know, I took geometry. I took algebra one, algebra two, took a little bit of trigonometry. I get math because I, I like it. I liked it a lot better than I did literature because I didn't like people telling me what people meant when they wrote stories. I thought, you don't know that. You don't know what they.
Exactly.
You know, I can tell you. And then they would ask me what I thought and I would tell them and they'd tell me it's wrong. I'd say, no, you can't tell me what I think is wrong. You ask me what I think is what I think. You can't tell me what I think. Uh, so I, I just had a problem with that even in school. But uh, but you know, this is why, what makes me so angry. This is so simple. In the elementary grades, teach them the basics, hone it in so that they know it frontwards, backwards and sideways. And then when you get into algebra and stuff like that, it make, it will make sense to you. But the other day they were, had like, eh, eh, like a P P equals W. And I'm like, this is in elementary school. What's it? Means partial, partial versus the whole. Why does she need to know that at five years old? At five years old, why does she need to know P P equal W? There's no way in this world she, she should still be knowing her, her math facts, you know, seven minus three or whatever. I, I just don't get it. And all we do is frustrate students because we're trying to push things on students that their brains are not. Ready to learn. They're not uh developed enough to learn some things. We're trying to teach them too early. And it frustrates students and they think they're dumb and because they don't get it and that is just not the case.
Well, and you can, you can take, you can take, they, they tried to put me in, in. I don't know what they call it now. I'm not going to say anything politically incorrect. They tried to put me in the, in the slow class. I'm, I'm sure they didn't call it the slow class then, whatever they call it now. And my friend, very, one of the smartest attorneys that I know, who can go through trivial pursuit and never missed a question. I mean, he's just a G, he's very smart. I tried to do the same thing with him because often if, if you're bored and you're boisterous, uh, they don't know what to do with you. And, and I think they do misidentify and mischaracterize kids. They get shuffled through uh over time. But um, you know, they do make it overly complicated. You know, they've got this whole literacy program that they're trying to dump a hundred. I don't know, it was a hundred million dollars into literacy. I'm like, test the kids, figure out which ones can't read. If they can't read, pull them out of the cla, pull them out of a couple of classes that don't have anything to do with reading that are superfluous. Fire some administrative people, take that money, put it into reading tutors and then you're in reading. You're in, you're in reading for thirteen years until you get it. Easy. I could walk into a classroom and look at the budget and walk around and ask people what they do and then look at the student's schedule. I could solve that problem. In about twenty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Now, some people would be mad because maybe some people would be let go and some classes would be dumped and some things would be reallocated. But that's what you do when you've got to make tough decisions. But they've made it virtually impossible to make the tough decisions that are necessary to educate the children. Because the interest of the unions and the teachers and the administration and the government employees are more important than the kids' educational excellence. And their achievement. And so now they're stuck.
Yeah.
They're trying to solve, throw all this money at a problem, but they've got a structure that will not even allow a lot of money to fix a problem.
Well, you know, Ronald Reagan is the one who said a government employee is the closest thing to eternal life you'll find here on earth. Uh, you will, uh, you, you never get rid of a government employee. We, we set up all of these uh, uh, positions. And while I've been on the school board, they, they cut positions, but they put them somewhere else and, and they just rename them. I mean, we have renamed so many positions. Oh, well, we cut that position. Yeah, but they're over here and they're called something else. I've never known of a person that got their job cut that had to leave. It wasn't getting ready to retire anyway. If somebody's getting ready to retire, they might cut their position and put it somewhere else. But another dirty little secret they do with the budget and they've done it, they, I, I caught on to this when Jesse Register was here. Uh, that they have all these positions and I'd say, who's in this position? Well, nobody. Well, we funded it. Well, that's where they get their little. Slush fund. They have these little positions that are there that maybe they haven't filled yet. So they can go over here and get, you know, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars when they need it because, oh, well, this position wasn't filled. So we took this money and we did this with it, you know. It's a, just a, it's just like three-card money. It's just hard to keep up with when you're talking about.
It's like a three-card money.
When you, when you, uh, you know, when you, when you're just trying to, to chase it, you can't, I mean, like I say, I work all day. Uh, a lot of people think that this is my full-time job and it's just not. They think I sit and then scour over this four hundred page budget. But there's just so many places to hide things. And I just, you know, you just expect people to be honest and be upfront. But boy, they can always manage to find money when they want it. And it's always, like you say, we, we have these uh reading programs. This last reading program that we adopted and we adopted it first this year, which was absolutely ridiculous. Because uh, so many of the teachers were having to figure out how to do online stuff and then we started a reading program. Oh, that's a great idea. Now the kids are at home and nobody's there to help them and you're starting something brand new. That makes a lot of sense to me. You know, I'm like you, Brandon. It's just common sense is taking a side street and I don't know what to do to get it back on track. I just don't understand.
Well, last thing, I guess, because I don't want to keep you longer. Um, I want to close with this thing. Um, I think, I've lived in Brainerd for thirteen years. And um, I, I bought a home. I wasn't really thinking about getting married or having kids. Uh, we are debt-free, uh, live a very frugal lifestyle, even though I could, could live a lot bigger when I grew up so poor. I'm, I'm. I'm never going to go back there, so I don't take risks. I mean, I take risks in business, but I, I do it with cash. And um. Up until this year, I've never seen a school bus run in our neighborhood. And we're in that Belfort area between Belfort, uh, Moore and Brainerd. And everyone that, that moves into our neighborhood, they move in, they have young kids, kids get to be about five or six years old. They move out to a better school district. Or they homeschool or they private school. Um. We had an opportunity to, to get school choice in Hamilton County and, and from what I understand, like two or three Republicans and one of them was. Was Mayor Coppinger um, was involved in all that. I don't think he's conservative at all. I think he ran as a Republican, as a lifelong government employee because he just, that's how he could win. He's pro-tax increase, pro-mask, pro-big government. Um, not a Republican at all. And uh, yet a couple of other people in the state legislature and senate that, that killed that opportunity. For Hamilton County to get a little bit of, I mean, nowhere near where it needs to be, but at least get a foot in the door for school choice and between the teachers' unions. And uh, and those, those Republicans, certainly not conservatives, that got squashed. Where does school choice stand in the state right now? And, and who's holding it back? And if they're Republicans, why?
Well, I, I don't know why they're holding it back. Uh, I, there's a few things. I, of course, I am all about school choice. Uh, uh, I've talked to you uh, earlier about, you know, homeschoolers. I have a great amount of respect for homeschoolers. Uh, it's a hard job, but I'm speaking on the house, homeschool will do a great job. But the, one of the problems I have with vouchers and things like that, a lot of Christian schools won't take those. Because they don't want a lot of government interference. Because if you take government money, it comes to interference. I would really like to see a tax credit. Of course, we don't have an income tax in the state of Tennessee. Thank God. But maybe off of the, the federal taxes or something like that. I think that's a more fair way to deal with this. If you want to educate your students somewhere else, take it right straight off the top of your taxes. You're not going to have to pay for it, you know, uh, the school. But that's the, the way that I feel about it. Uh, but I do not know why Republicans would stand in the way of uh students getting vouchers. If um, I, I just, I just don't know. I've talked to, to some of them about it. And uh, I think that they were just, some of them were against it because it wasn't going to be statewide. Some of them were against it because we were just picking and choosing and they didn't think you could pick and choose which counties could do it and which counties couldn't. Now, that's the understanding that I had from some of them. Uh, but I wanted to see it statewide. I think that we could, we could do this. And I tell you where I thought we needed to start it, Brandon. I thought we needed to start it in pre-K. Because let me tell you what's happening in pre-K. When we have been, first of all, my charge is K through twelve. It is not pre-K. Uh, the, the school board, we are responsible for K through twelve education. We're adding pre-K to our schools. With that comes, we have to, all the new schools that we built, we're building, built, we're building classrooms for pre-K students. In some schools, we had pre-K students in classrooms and we had the people who we had it charged of meeting on stages in schools. But yet the pre-K had a classroom. That is not right. It is not fair. And also, when we start putting pre-Ks into our schools. Not only does it cost us more money to build those classrooms, electricity and water and all that kind of thing, we are putting people out of business. We're putting these like uh daycares. That's why you see so many of them going under. We, we put a lot of church daycares out of business when we started putting kindergarten in our schools. Now we're doing it to pre-K. We are paying for pre-K in our education system. It is not our charge. If people feel strongly about it and they want to have a pre-K, then there's a lot of, of entrepreneurs and people like that who want to fund it. They can do that. But you are, we are putting people out of business and therefore hurting the school, the money the schools get on the other end. Because the more businesses that go under, the less money the school system gets. And so. It's counterproductive to me. Uh, that, that we have pre-Ks in our schools. Uh, we need to concentrate on K through twelve. You should be able to start teaching. They keep saying, well, we, we need to get them ready for kindergarten. We need pre-K. Well, before it was, we need to get them ready for first grade, so we need kindergarten. Other, what are we going to do? Start, you know. Soon as they come out of the womb, we grab them up and take them off to some government school. It just gets to be ridiculous. So these kids are not developmentally ready for a lot of things we're trying to push off on them. But it is not our charge in the Hamilton County school system to take care of pre-K. And another dirty little secret about pre-K for years, and I'm sure we're still doing it, is there's only a, a, a limited amount of space in pre-K. Well, guess what? That's supposed to be for low-income people. A lot of those things were taken up by teachers' kids, administrators' kids. And people like that were in those pre-K programs. I tried a few years to get, uh, to get an audit of uh whose kids, you know, what kids were in what. Of course, because of privacy concerns, you couldn't do that. So they hide behind that veil a lot because you really can't find out a whole lot about whose kids are there and whose kids are not. But a lot of those places are being taken up by people other than low-income people. So therefore leaving the low-income people out of the loop again.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you being on this program. Education is something that I, I'm very passionate about. Because it, it, it seems, it is. It is so remarkably simple. And dare I say, affordable to do it correctly. If you take the government out of it and you get a group of parents together and everybody chips in five or six thousand or four thousand, three thousand. There's between home, there's all kinds of ways to educate children. And it used to be they did it with a, a single teacher. And, you know, in a, in a schoolhouse with dirt on the floor and, and chalk and chalkboards. And that was it. And, and not even that. It wasn't like they were all kindergartners. I mean, this, this poor old teacher had to teach kids from first grade up to probably seventh or eighth. And, and they were literate. And, and those, those people that went through those educational systems, you know, founded our country. And people could read, people could write. And we've, we've gotten so far away from the basics. And it, it's like everything else government touches. It takes a dollar and it gives you twenty cents worth of product and that product's usually not very good.
Let me, one, one quick, other quick thing about the charter schools. We have some great charter schools here. One of my favorite courses in my district. It's the Ivy Academy up there. Principal up there is absolutely fantastic. Uh, she does a great job. But another thing we need to watch, Biden is, has said, and when he was running for office. He was going to do away with charter schools. When he does that, it's going to be a devastating blow to a lot of students. We cannot let that happen. We need to rally around behind these charter schools and uh let them continue to stay open. And uh, that's, it's really been one of the things that really broke my heart. Besides the other nine hundred thousand other things. When Biden got elected, I thought, I don't know if he really going to follow through with this to, to get rid of, of charter schools. I hope he does not because that is really going to be a blow to a lot of people in this county.
Well, Rhonda, um, I admire you because you, you speak, you just tell the truth and you, you point out the obvious problems. Uh, and in three or four minutes of, of listening to you, something is actually said. And problems are identified and solutions are identified in, instead of what a lot of people do that are elected to office. They're, they're far more worried about how they are perceived by other people and how they are uh thought of. By someone in the grocery store than helping the constituents they were elected to serve. Um, and it takes a lot of bravery and it takes a lot of, um. I was sitting down, I'll tell you the story and I'll close with this. I was talking to somebody one time. And he was a man. And he said, I don't know if I can even say this. He, he was not happy with your delivery and how direct you were and all this stuff. And I told him.
My husband had that same problem.
Yes. And, and I told him, and I don't know if I should say this or not. This is a family show. Uh, I said, if. I said, buddy, if you had half the you-know-what that Rhonda Thurman has, you might actually be effective as a conservative. And I'm going to tell you what I said. I said, and that's why I've always locked her. And I said, if we could get a little bit of that in the rest of you, we might actually get some legislation passed and some things done. He did not like that comment, but it is true. And, um, and I've always admired you for that. And not only do you, you stand up, you're, you're nice people.
Well, yeah, well, I, you know, a lot of people, somebody said, you know, Rodney, it wouldn't hurt you to smile. And once I thought, no, there's somebody that doesn't know me. But, you know, one time, uh, the, um, uh, I heard Curtis Adams say one time, he used to talk with him and say. If you vote this way, I'm going to vote you out. I'm going to vote. He said, that'd be like somebody stealing my ugly wife. You know, if, but I do, I try to do the right thing, Brandon. I always do. I want to listen to people's arguments. I've had people change my mind about the way I felt about things through discussion. And uh, but, you know, I, a lot of people don't. They say, well, you've been on the board this long and nothing's changed. Well, nobody ever votes with me. If they would do what I wanted to do sometime, maybe things would change. I have had people get. they say, well, you've been on the board this long and nothing's changed. Well, nobody ever votes with me. If they would do what I wanted to do sometime, maybe things would change. I have had people get off the board and call and say, Rhonda, you know what? You were right. And I'm thinking, I wish you felt that way when you were on the school board. You know, because what you said, it was going to happen, did happen. Or, uh, maybe, you know, we need to look at doing things a little bit different. Like I say, I've been on the school board and occasionally I think that I've won maybe five or six votes since I've been on the school board of things that I wanted to do. A phase was, was one of them. But, uh, as I say, I, I just wish we could get more conservative people on the school board and the ones that say they're conservative or not, most of them. Uh, they go along with everything that, you know, they just keep thinking, if we just spend another million, it's going to change. It's just not, Brandon, it's just not. That's not the answer.
I agree. Well, Rhonda, thank you for coming. Uh, if you're watching, if you've enjoyed this conversation, if you've enjoyed the program, please do subscribe, uh, support our publication. It's how we get out there. And, um, just about for every dollar that you give us, we can find one and a half conservatives out there that, uh, think like you. And the more of us there are, the more likely things are to change. Rhonda, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Good luck.
Thank you. Brandon Lewis here with Tennessee Conservative, signing off.